Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 14, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorba here. Trustee Dorshavitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have all present in a quorum.
Thank you. Chief Tidrington, why don't you lead us in the place of allegiance tonight, please?
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Before we do the approval of the agenda tonight, I just have a couple housekeeping items. One, if you're watching on Comcast tonight, that's it's a miracle because we have still not been able to establish contact between our cable system here and the Comcast system. We're working on it. We think it's more of a hardware issue than a software problem, but we are going to obviously record this meeting and we'll have it replayed tomorrow on our township website. And you should be able to watch us live right now if you're on Wide Open West on their government channel. So we apologize for the inconvenience and we'll take care of that in the days ahead. The other issue I want to raise is regarding masks and the wearing of masks. I do have a copy of the governor's latest executive order on masks, and there is a provision specifically in here for individuals do not have to wear a mask who are giving a speech for broadcast or an audience. So I'm just leaving that up to each and every one of you who will be coming to the podium tonight regarding our various issues and also to the board members. It's at your discretion. And also, nothing in this order shall be taken to a bridge protections guaranteed by the state or federal constitution under these emergency circumstances. So that would obviously involve the First Amendment and freedom of speech, petition, assembly, and other privileges and rights under the Constitution. So I just want to make that statement. Otherwise, we're going to move on to item C, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, July 14, 2020.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is item D, approval of the consent agenda. And I think at this point, I'd like, well, after it's approved, I'd like Trustee Dempsey to discuss the one item that you've inserted in there as a communication. That was our best option for putting that in the agenda tonight. So any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Then I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Trustee Dempsey.
Yes, I took this photo. I appreciate it being included in the packet. It's on page 11 of the packet. And here on the sidewalk between Ann Arbor Road and Joy Road, east side of Beck, someone in the community decided to call attention to this being an area that should not be mowed. And it's a area of apparently some berries and other natural feature. And I just thought it was pretty neat to ride by there and see. Here's another example of the community spirit we have here in Plymouth Township.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move on to item E. This is public comment, limited to three minutes. This will not be your only opportunity during the evening. There will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. And we also encourage public comment on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular topic. So at this point, any comments or questions by anybody in the audience who would like to come forward? Hearing none, we're going to move on to new business. Item F is the public hearing for the brownfield plan for Hillside Residence Apartments 41661 Plymouth Road. This has been advertised in the paper of record, Clerk Vorba, and notices were also sent out to the various taxing jurisdictions that may be impacted by this project. So at this time, I'm going to call the roll to open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, please do so at your pleasure.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Yes.
Motion to open hearing passes.
Okay, we are open for the public hearing at 7:05 on the brownfield plan for Hillside Residence Apartments. This is the public comment portion only. If you are an applicant or another directly interested party, your time would really come up in item two. So at this point, any comments or questions by the public regarding this project? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Clerk.
I move for the closing of the public hearing.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second to close the public hearing? Motion made by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Kermey. Trustee Heitman. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer, Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Yeah.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, the public hearing is closed at 7:06 PM. Next is item F2, consideration of the brownfield plan for Hillside Residence Apartments 41611 Plymouth Road. We have a variety of interested parties here, who are the applicants, I presume, and their consultants. We also have our township engineer and his staff with us, as well as Laura Haw, our planning director. So we are, I think, all of the parties have been gathered, and I don't know who would like to start us off. I think that should probably be the applicant or Laura. Laura's going to start us off? Okay. I would also just add before Laura begins that this matter was tentatively approved by the brownfield authority at their last meeting, subject to final review by the planning consultant and township engineer and township attorney. The township attorney's already rendered a few minor changes to the proposed brownfield plan. So tonight, we're really here to hear from Laura, Jeremy's staff, and the applicant. So Laura, why don't you start us off?
Thank you Supervisor Heisey. Good evening trustees. Let me know if you can't hear me well enough with the mic. The applicant, Jonah Properties, is requesting a brownfield plan for Hillside Residences, which is the former Courthouse Girl site at 41661 Plymouth Road. There is a proposal for a planned unit development on this piece that would result in two five-story buildings with 88 residential units. Final approval of the PUD has not been granted at this time yet. The applicant requested a PUD extension from this board back in February of this year, which was granted in part in order to provide the applicant with additional time to seek this brownfield plan from the township. The proposed capital investment for this project is approximately 17 and a half million. The brownfield plan that is included in your packet, which is dated May 20 and revised July 1, states that this site qualifies as a facility due to hazardous substances in the soil. The requested brownfield activities include a Phase 1 and Phase 2 and baseline environmental assessments, the excavation treatment, transportation, and disposal of the contaminated soils, construction of specialized foundations, and the preparation of the brownfield and 381 work plan. In late 2019, this is when the brownfield plan was really first broached to the township. The applicant had requested at that time 2.9 million in remediation costs. Since that initial figure was brought to the table, myself and the township engineer have been meeting at length with the applicant, and this number for the requested remediation was then reduced to 1.8 million, which was what was presented to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at their June 8 meeting. The Brownfield Authority ultimately made a recommendation to this body for approval of the brownfield plan, but contingent that the final figures be further evaluated by the township engineer. The township consultants then met with the applicant again on June 17, and the result of that is a 1.44 million ask in the brownfield plan, which is broken out in Attachment E. It's important to note that township attorney Kevin Bennett also reviewed the brownfield plan and supplied comments to the applicant, which have been included. There's an additional two comments on page 42 of your packet, which Attorney Bennett states for your informational purposes. The action requested this night is for the board to consider the brownfield plan, which is in line with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's recommendation. And approval of this brownfield plan would essentially allow the applicant to demolish the existing vacant building, the Courthouse Girl site, and then to create a higher taxable end product in the long run with those two residential complexes to be constructed. The applicant is here this evening to address specific questions that you may have on the plan. And I believe Township Engineer Jeremy wanted to add a couple things about the review of those numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, we reviewed the individual eligible activities that are listed within the brownfield plan down to the details of how many cubic yards are being removed for the site for each operation and what is exactly included in each of these quotes provided. In general, the activities include removal of fill material from the site for site grading, sanitary sewer installation, storm sewer installation, as well as caisson installations for deep foundations for the buildings and grade beams that transfer that load down to the basement floor.
The question that I have regards the demolition of the existing property. Is there a specific timeline for that if this plan is approved?
The applicant would have to answer on a specific timeline. The good news is that they have not included the demolition in their brownfield plan. So that means that tomorrow they could start pulling permits to do that demolition, and it's not contingent on the approval of this plan, the brownfield plan by the state. So that could happen as soon as the applicant is ready to pull permits. And maybe a recommendation later this evening, the board will be considering a six-month extension again of the PUD. Maybe that would be a condition added before Labor Day.
The proposed residential development at that site, refresh my memory, has that already been approved by the Planning Commission and other entities in the township or no?
It has gone through most of the process, but it still requires one last review by the commission and one final review with this body for the PUD contract.
Okay, any other questions by board members for Laura?
Yes, this may be also the township engineer. What are the two major hazardous substances that are causing this to be considered a facility?
I mean, just based on the baseline assessment activities, it looks like there are potential, you know, contamination, but mainly site fill, crushed concrete, glass, just leftover waste.
Okay, so it's nothing really hazardous. It's construction material, concrete and wood.
Yeah, some petroleum type smell, but I don't think anything's been tested from that end.
I thought there was leachate coming over from the old Burrows site at the corner of Hagerty and Plymouth.
Okay.
So do you guys want to comment on that? Yeah, no, well, you got to come up here because we need you on the record and just again state your name for the record.
My name is Jill Ferrari. I am the managing partner of Runivari Development. We're the consultant on the project for Jonah Properties. The site did undergo a subsurface investigation that tested for contaminants that are regulated by Eagle, and there are presence of solvents and some other regulated materials on top of the glass and the wood and the debris. And whether that source is fill that was put on the site or leachate from the other landfill, we're not certain, but there are hazardous chemicals present.
The other landfill being on the north side of Plymouth Road and the east side, west side of Hagerty?
It is, it's across the creek. It's across the waterway from the site to the back.
So it's the actual dump that is north of the railroad track, is what you're saying?
As you're asking me.
North of the railroad track is a longstanding landfill.
I'm focused on the one right here, which would be, that would be, that's my understanding, that's contaminated.
So the Burrows parking lot is what you're talking about?
Well, the old Burrows parking lot, yeah.
No.
Where? Oh, that?
In Heinz Park?
Yes, there's former fill at Heinz Park. It was identified.
Oh, that's not surprising.
Some of the historical reports, including the Phase 1, I can find some former fill back here.
Chuck.
Does it leach if this is at a lower elevation?
It can leach uphill.
Like I said, we don't know. You know, there's topographic maps in the Phase 1, but all we know is that there is, you know, what we typically find at consultants is if there's trash on one side of the river, there's trash on the other side of the river. So it could have been dumped at some point. The historical records for the site aren't that clear.
So it is not coming from Burrows, former Burrows property, which is on the north side of Plymouth Road?
Yeah, that's way over here.
We really don't know.
No, right here, guys. This, Chuck, Chuck, you should know. I mean, this area is contaminated. That's why it's never been developed. It's not the parking lot over here that's currently in use.
Yeah, it's the auxiliary parking lot.
Yeah.
But there's another landfill farther north on the north side of the railroad tracks.
Okay, well, that's a different matter.
I was trying to understand where the hypothesis is.
Yeah.
Of the source of the leachate.
Well, I can tell you firsthand that almost all of Heinz Park is, has got contamination in it because it was where the city of Detroit dumped all of their trash. They would just take it into the woods and dump it. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That goes back to my Wayne County days, and there's old landfills all over Heinz, Heinz Park. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Very good.
Well, I have general.
Yeah.
General questions. I'm not sure who to direct them at.
Okay.
So the first question is, if I understand right, there is 1.6 million dollars in the brownfield fund, and this is a request to use 1.4 million?
No, this, the way it would work, Jack, is this is a request for 1.4 million that they would pay. The developer would pay upfront, and then they would be reimbursed over a period of 25 to 30 years. Basically, what happens is it's a tax capture. So the property taxes that would have gone to us or the school district or whatever else would be redirected and go to reimbursing the developer until that 1.4 million is paid off.
So there's no risk that some other developer would come in here tomorrow, let's say, and say, I need $300,000 for a brownfield, and we couldn't handle that because of this 1.6 million in the fund?
No, we can't, we can't use that 1.6 million for this particular project.
What is it used for?
Well, it's a surplus that is in the brownfield budget, and we are, it has been largely dormant for many years. We're not, we're not quite sure how it's been accumulating over the years.
It came from that LOC project years ago. They captured, as they were allowed to, they captured excess taxes after the project was completed and reimbursed. They captured several more years and put it into a surplus fund.
And also the Victory Honda, didn't they put money in? No? Okay. So, Jack, there is money being taken out of that fund right now for the MITC Brownfield Authority. It is contingent upon us getting reimbursed by the state of Michigan, which because of COVID, we have not been able to get reimbursed yet. We are continuously actively pursuing that with the state, and we hope to be reimbursed to the tune of that the MITC would receive $700,000 in basically startup money for us to prepare the brownfield and other studies, financial, legal, and engineering related to the MITC project.
Okay, it's a bit off topic, but you mean because of COVID, we haven't gotten the money from the state?
Correct. I mean, the state is sitting on, sitting on money right now because they don't know how much they're going to have at the end of the year because of COVID. So they're not forthcoming with the money on MITC and many other projects.
They're conserving cash.
So if I could just restate my understanding of how this works, the mechanics, is that the developer pays for the remediation, and then the taxes are captured and the developer is reimbursed for a period up to 35 years. And they get interest too, right? Didn't I read that? So we're not, we don't outlay any cash. They continue to, that's accurate, right?
It's the difference between the old, the original tax value and the new, right? Gives that delta.
Correct. At the beginning, beginning of the project, the assessors will set a baseline. It's worth, I'll make up a number, a million dollars. And then at the end of the project, the, it's worth $5 million. The taxes on that delta of $4 million are captured and used to reimburse the developer.
So what benefit is there to us from this development?
Tax base.
Right now, that is not generating any tax revenue. It's generating a small amount of tax revenue. But I guess the benefit is you're going to get development of this project, which if the remediation were not done, you could argue no one would ever develop that land again.
But we wouldn't get the taxes?
You won't get the taxes for a period of time. Once the, once the taxes are captured and the developers reimburse for the 1.4 million, then the taxes flow to the taxing authorities. Great example of that is Victory Honda. This project's been going on since the 90s. We're going to write our last check to Victory Honda in March of next year, and then all of the taxes will now start to flow to the taxing authorities. But that's been, the taxes have been used to reimburse Victory Honda for 20-plus years.
Speaking of taxes, are the taxes up to date, payment on this property?
On this property? I don't know.
Yes, I'm seeing nodding of heads, yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments by the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-63, authorizing brownfield plan approval for applicant 2360-0520 for Hillside Residence.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba, seconded by Kermey? Trustee Kermey. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Well, did we have a comment on this, Mr. Supervisor, even though we had a public hearing?
Well, we had the public hearing, so I don't, I don't really think it would be necessary at this point unless the applicants want to, and I don't think they want to. So.
No one wants to speak to this.
Well, we've already had a public hearing.
Well, the next item we may hear.
Yeah, we may.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman. Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermey.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Don't go away because next is item three. This is consideration of the development extension for Hillside. Laura, would you like to just brief us on this?
Thank you. As you recall, in February of this year, the applicant did seek a six-month extension request for their planned unit development, which was granted. The applicant has submitted a letter, which is included in your packet, and there's also an updated version, I believe, that you received at your seat this evening, that details their request for the extension as related to COVID impacts. The township board is authorized for the zoning ordinance to grant a one-year extension. So this would be the second six-month extension, but also the final extension that's eligible under our current ordinance. And this extension would essentially allow the applicant to return to the Planning Commission and finalize their PUD contract agreement with the township, and then submit that to this body at a future meeting.
Can we have a stipulation in the, either in the motion, that the building be torn down by a date certain? And would that be, would that be acceptable to the applicant? In short, can you tear the building down by September 1st, October 1st? Well, you. Well, that's not always the case with the demolition. You don't have a hole in the ground, so.
Are you saying Sam Messina is still the owner? That's why he's taking care of it?
No, Sam has been, well, Sam and I are both, we're in a land contract agreement. I'm late Jonah, Jonah Properties. So Sam and I are still in a land contract agreement, and he's been kind enough to take care of the property for us.
So are you using external financing for the project?
Extra financing?
External. In other words, you're not taking it out of your pocket. You're going to use a bank or an.
Yes, no, most definitely.
All right, so that should give you an incentive to hurry it up because interest rates are at record lows.
I wish I would have had a shovel in the ground regardless of interest rates right now. It's just the process of what motions it's been going through from step A to B to C.
Well, I'll withdraw any interest in putting this in the motion or the resolution, but obviously you know where we stand. We get a lot of complaints about this building. Folks expected that this building was going to be taken down a year ago, and it's still there. And yeah, it's, it's been, well, it's been maintained, I mean, at a minimum. But we've got a lot of exciting development happening in our community and on the city side, and this still is a real, a real problem in that corridor, so.
I'm sorry to hear that Supervisor. It's just, it would be a repeat. It's just the process that we've gone through. It benefits everybody. It benefits Sam for me to close up with him. It benefits me so I can get my motions going, and it benefits you guys so we can get this building torn down and see a nice development go up there.
Yeah. You know, it's in our best interest to see a nice development there. That's why we approved the brownfield plan tonight. I cannot speak for the board, but I certainly do not want to see that building repurposed in any way. We're, I hope that we're moving forward tonight. Okay, all right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to move forward.
Well, I know, so let's.
We're moving forward.
Let's move forward.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. So perhaps it'd be helpful if you gave us what your timetable looks like now. When would you expect the brownfield remediation to start? And when would you?
I'm not too sure how to answer that because right now, once we get approved over here, now we got to go to the state, and Jill might be able to help out with an answer on that. For me to get financing, as we were spoken earlier, we got to get the brownfield part of the financing, even though I don't have, you know, I have to dish the money out originally. Well, when I bring that approval of financing from the state slash township, the institutes take a look at that, and they give us money on top of that because it's a warranted dollar that comes in from, you know, the state slash township at that point. So Jill, I don't know how long before we might get in front of the state. Weeks, six weeks?
So, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to say probably at least another 30 days.
30 days in the state process for what? They have to approve the brownfield plan. For the school debt capture. So, I mean, that's the answer. I.
You're telling me that in 30 days, the state will approve this?
So they've already seen the work plan. They've already been involved in the project. They have an administrative review process internally, so probably another 30 days at that point. But we'll keep this back informed as we hear back from Eagle over the next few weeks.
This is the same Eagle? This is the same Eagle that is taking care of those dams up there near Midland, right? So anyway, so let's assume 30 days. Then what happens next? And how long will that take?
To conduct the activities?
Yes.
Well, they're all, the activities that we've sought reimbursement for, they are predominantly woven into the development of the project. It's not, you know, a remediation process that happens and then development starts. It's, it's really part of the development process. So you're asking, you know, when construction starts?
Yeah.
That's when we start incurring these costs and start spending. They're just added costs as part of the development process.
Okay. So it's all one ball of wax? The, the, what you're telling me is the demolition of the existing structure, the work substrata as part of the development and construction of the new building? That's all one, one enchilada? I'm trying to be diverse.
Yes, except that the demolition is not included in this plan. So I think Laura already said that's not contingent on the state approval, but anything that's listed in this plan, we risk not getting approval for the capture for those items if we move too fast.
So Eagle's approval you're seeking is only to facilitate the capture of the school six mil tax?
Correct, and operating.
They're not gonna have any say over the, the construction or demolition or anything like that? They're more-
I mean, we could move forward right now, but we would risk not getting capture for those items and it would take longer, because it would come out of local capture. And our goal here would be to limit the capture to a short amount of time as possible so that you get the full benefit of the tax increase on the contract.
Okay. Then I guess I go back to my original question. If, if it's gonna take 30 days or 45 days for the state to do this, then what's the timetable for the developer to take the first actual, physical action on the site to demolish or whatever?
It would be probably, uh, we're in the process right now, so wait. So as of right now, we've submitted all our engineering drawings, all the underground drawings, sole site drawings. We're ready for permit pickup. They're waiting at the county for us to pick those up. We just haven't picked them up because of not knowing where we're gonna go at this point. Our in, our architectural drawings are like 95% complete. We've been waiting for this meeting to come up to see where we're gonna land to proceed with completion. So as of now, tomorrow, we start with completion. I would say probably, I don't know, maybe another 30 days or so for completion of that. And then we submit for drawings, you know, for, for construction drawings. So hopefully, if everything works out right, we get going before the end of the year, we start tearing this thing down and start construction on it. I, I've hoped before, though, and I stand that, I hate to put a date, because I always get backlash on it, but that's ultimately.
All right, I have several questions. Let's take the easy one. The six-month extension is stopped by what action? Is it a stamped plan? Is that what, where it ends? Pardon?
By us.
Final PUD approval by the township board.
But that means, though, they need to have a final, then that would be contingent upon, once we approve the final stamp, then that's when the six months ends? I'm trying to understand where, what action has to be done within six months? All right, so-
That's doable. Because this extension's through the end of the calendar year.
So, that being said, if we get all our contracts and everything done with this, the city, can we come in for final while we're waiting for this Eagle to give us all our approvals and all that? I, I don't-
She says yes. So you can do some parallel actions. Your project manager-
That being said, we'll proceed with the, I, I, I would have proceeded four months ago. I didn't realize that was all it was. I thought we had to get everything intact.
Who's your project manager? They need to know this and understand how to do parallel actions.
Yeah. I'm the project manager.
All right. Next question for you is, will you demolish the building without financing for the project?
No, it all works together.
All right. There's a big if.
All right, I understand.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? Anyone else in the public on the extension issue? All righty, then. I don't hear any other questions or comments. I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-64, authorizing a second and final six-month extension to application 2306-0918 for the Hillside Residence PUD project.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Before you, before you do that, I'll have a question about the word "final." All right. If we have, I'm thinking that this is gonna, I don't see, I don't feel confident that in six months, you're gonna be ready, but hopefully the final doesn't preclude you from proceeding. All right, so it's negotiable.
We've had, yeah, we've had.
All right. Okay, so we have a live motion on the table.
The attorney's saying, no, it's not. We can vote on another extension if we have to in six months. Nothing would preclude that.
No, I think it has to be a new PUD.
The ordinance only allows two six-month?
Yeah.
It used to be one year. Yeah, one, all right.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Hightman. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Let's keep in touch, okay? Because you know what we're looking for. All righty, then. We're gonna move on to item four. This is the General Technology Ventures Request for Vacation of Existing Public Utility Easement. And as you can see, there's definitely a pattern here between items four and eight. So if, assuming I hear no objections, we'll do, be doing voice votes on all of these. And so Jeremy, why don't you start us off with, with item four?
Yeah, the first item is for the Plymouth General Storage. That's south of Ann Arbor, east of General Drive. It's a, a few new buildings going in on that site, one of which is gonna go over top of the existing water main. So what they're asking for today is vacation of that easement so they can build that new water main. We've received the revised easement and obviously the approvable engineering plans that show the relocation of that water main. Uh, and have reviewed the easement vacation for applicability.
So you don't feel a risk of building a building on top of a water main?
No, the, the point is we'll vacate the easement and before construction of that building, we're gonna come in and demo the water main, relocate the water paint and go from there.
At their expense?
At their expense, exactly.
So you relocate.
Any other questions on item four? Then I need a motion on item four. Mr. Hightman? Motion's made by Trustee Hightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Objections? Hearing none. We're gonna move on to item five. Modern Method Sanitary Sewer Easement. Jeremy?
This is a lot split. It's actually four different easements for four different properties on the northeast corner of Joy and Canton Center Road. It's a new sanitary sewer that's going in behind the buildings. Three of the easements are from the developer. One of them is from a property owner, because he sold it prior to the easement getting executed. But these are, all four are for the sanitary.
Are these the homes at Canton Center and Joy Road on the northeast corner?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Any other questions on item five? Jack? So has the work been done on this?
Yeah, the work is done. Construction is complete on the sanitary sewers.
So this is just for the record?
Yeah, dedicating it now that we know the, the location of the sanitary sewer is actually where our easement is, so we don't, uh, end up outside of it.
Well, this is all legal mumbo jumbo, then?
Yep.
Okay. Legal and engineering.
That's a legal term.
It is a legal term, yes. Latin, I, I used to be a lawyer.
It's Latin.
Latin, I know that. Any other questions on item five? Then I need a motion on item five. Mr. Hightman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-66, authorizing the Township Clerk, Township Attorney and Township Engineer to sign the sanitary sewer easement for Modern Method Construction Parcel 1 and to authorize the recording of sound.
Motion's made by Trustee Hightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item six, Modern Method Sanitary Easement Number Two. Anything different or remarkable about this?
Nope, it's just the, the second parcel.
Mumbo jumbo. Okay. I need a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Hightman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-67, authorizing the Township Clerk, Township Attorney and Township Engineer to sign the sanitary sewer easement for Modern Method Construction Parcel 2 and to authorize the recording of the sound.
Motion's made by Trustee Hightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorva. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Objections? Hearing none. Item seven, Edward J. DeRose's Sanitary Sewer Easement, which is Parcel Three. Same thing?
Same thing. This is just the private property owner who already bought the property, signed off on the easement.
Okay. Any questions? I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Hightman?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-68, authorizing the Township Clerk, Township Attorney and Township Engineer to sign the sanitary sewer easement for Edward J. DeRose, Parcel Three, and to authorize the recording of sound.
Motion's made by Trustee Hightman, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Hearing no questions or objections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Objections? Hearing none, good. Item eight, Modern Method Sanitary Easement Number Four. Same thing?
Yep.
Okay. I need a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 2020-07-14-69, authorizing the Township Clerk, Township Attorney and Township Engineer to sign the sanitary sewer easement for Modern Method Construction Parcel Four and to authorize the recording of sound.
Motion's made by Trustee Hightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Objections? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We're all done with that. Next up is item nine. This is the Annual Economic Development Update. Always exciting. We have Laura Hall with us tonight and Trustee Hightman, who assists us diligently on economic development issues. Unfortunately, Trustee Hightman, this will be your last presentation of this nature, as you will be no longer on the Board of Trustees at the end of the year. So this will be your-
Unless he runs as a write-in.
He could, you know, you never know. Those, but those things never work, so. Okay. All right. You guys gonna, are you gonna just stay there or are we gonna do this? Okay. Okay, so let's see here. I do have a cheat sheet. So the welcome, oh, the welcome is me. Well, this is the annual economic development presentation. Welcome. We, we like to do this every year, because we have always a tremendous number of, of economic development projects happening in the township. I think it's especially relevant this year, given the COVID challenge that we have. We are, we're really fortunate in that despite the, the worldwide pandemic, our projects are still in play. We really have not lost any significant projects. We've lost some momentum, but everybody has. So I'm not, I'm not gonna lose sleep over that. But if you look at all of the major projects ongoing and planned for the, for the community, everything is still, is still moving along. And Laura and Gary will elaborate. So I will turn it over to Gary, actually, for Economic Development 101.
Okay. I insisted this slide be back in, because every year we talk about economic development. Every year, somebody says, what, come on, guys, what, what's this tax stuff? Are you giving away my money or what? In reality, economic development in a nutshell, program, policies, activities, anything at all that can improve the economic well-being and quality of life of this township. And that's what we go out and try to do every single day, is bring the tax base and keep the tax base low and to bring in good business and good jobs right here. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Thank you. Yeah. The importance of economic development, obviously, a big piece with new business recruiting, some retail development, some site development. We'll show a little bit of what this means. But obviously, we want Plymouth Township to be a place people come to. Even with COVID, I get calls from Germany, Japan and China all the time saying, hey, we'd like to, we'd like to bring business in. Tell us more about the township. And, you know, that's, it's a great thing. And that's, it's one of the things that we, we do all the time, so.
Okay, tell me, just say next.
Yep, next. Where we've been, proactive economic development definitely is something that really didn't do a, a lot of activity prior to, to us coming in. It was a lot of, well, we just let things go and it'll happen and, you know, okay. But we really started to be proactive. I've called every Realtor, developer, 100 times probably, since I've been in office and doing this, just to say, if there's anything you need, I offered up you guys. I said, the board would be happy to talk to you. Anybody would be happy to talk to you, because that's the kind of way that the township is. Next. Incentives and things we have to offer. You know, obviously, tax abatements. We haven't been given too many of those. Brownfield, we're talking about that tonight. But I work every day with Wayne County and the state of Michigan and their financing options and some of the, the things that they have to offer. Certainly, the payback period and the goals of the community are always the utmost things we gotta worry about. Okay, Laura?
All right, so for new investment, this is separate than what we call significant reinvestment. So these are new builds or new users that have come in, not a remodel. And in the past year, we've seen three new commercial industrial facilities that have been fully constructed. That includes Wabasto, the development at Five and Beck with the Taco Bell and Commercial Plaza, and then also the completion of Polytech. And we estimate that, based on the building department records, it's about $20 million in new investment. Did you want to mention anything, Supervisor Heisey, about COVID?
Well, sure. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have, we have not suffered any major loss in, in economic development due to COVID, other than just time delays. We've been trying to, as a board, have been proactive in trying to work with our, our various businesses, restaurants and others who, who have been most severely impacted. We've approved a, a motion to allow for outdoor dining and we've had some, quite a few applications already. We've been very innovative in opening up Township Hall safely to the public. That's an example of one of the screens that was crafted and developed by Troy Design and Manufacturing on Sheldon Road and was provided to us free to all of the departments in the township. And, you know, we, we've, throughout the, the COVID crisis, we never really closed. I mean, we were always either here in some very limited capacity or we had our employees working from home. We did not lay anybody off and we encouraged employees to work from home and come to Township Hall in order to do essential business that, that simply could not be done online or by phone. That put us in a very good position, that when we finally went live full-time on June 1st, we did not have to deal with a, a massive backlog of permits or applications or anything of the sort. We were able to really, truly hit the ground running. We had applicants coming in here for everything from major building permits to site plans to roof permits and fence permits. And people were, were, I think, were very pleased that we were fully operational and able to serve their, their needs, both in the business community and also for, for residents.
I would say that that is something that's unique about Plymouth Township, just in working with other municipalities through the past four months. I think your ability to use technology and receive permits and applications, even when there maybe wasn't necessarily someone here, has been a huge advantage to this community, as opposed to some- as opposed to some municipalities who just completely shut down or wasn't able to accept things virtually and really had just a full stop.
The, the technology that we've implemented in the building department over the last four years has been remarkable, and I know Sherry Parmelchuk has, has been in here before to update us on that, and it's been, it's been a terrific boost for the business community and for applicants, and it really allowed us to continue to move forward, albeit more slowly during the COVID crisis. Another thing, too, I don't know if it's in the, in the package here, but also Jeremy and his team at Spalding have put together a, a brand-new comprehensive GIS service for the township. Employees and staff are now being trained on that GIS system, and that will be fully integrated in all of our departments. The game plan is that Sherry or anybody in the building department in the future can press a button and, on a particular parcel, and you're gonna be able to see every single element from ground, from underground all the way to the top, and all the permits and plan reviews and everything that have ever been done. So it's, we're, we're going very digital on that, which I think is very unique for a community of our size, frankly, so.
I've had developers compliment our building department for how good and, and, you know, they are actually, hey, we say we're open for business, that, that group truly signifies how that's supposed to work.
And our ability to, through the clerk's office and through assessing and building to file the, what's the word I'm looking for, not deeds, but...
Record?
Just, just record, record things like deeds and other, other mandatory legal documents. I would also give kudos to the assessing office, that's Wayne County Assessing, that has nothing to do with Wayne County, that's their name, and they, they are independent contractors who do the assessing work. They were also in here during the COVID crisis on an as-needed basis, and they worked a lot from home, but we were able to integrate our operations with theirs and, and continue to move through projects and permits and deeds and other legal documents that needed to be recorded. Okay?
And this is the Michigan International Technology Center, which is a long five-mile from Beck to Napier, and this is the joint venture with not only Northville Township, but also the state, the county, and other regional players. You can see on the right, that's the new MITC logo and website. There will be new promotional and marketing material available as well, because there are a number of new business and technology parks that are coming online. So just in the past year, we had two developed, which is the Ridge 5 and then the VTEC Business Park. And just those two alone have resulted in 20 new buildable lots. And so while there are not buildings on those lots yet, those parks are underway for infrastructure and utilities.
I'm sorry, Laura, could you, where's the VTEC one?
It's, it's, that one is the, the former Dehoko Prison site between Beck and Ridge.
You will see a photo of that, right? It's VTEC.
And then this $100,000 MEDC grant, what is that? Is that the money that we're waiting on?
This was last year, that was applied by both the Northville and Plymouth Township, and that is allowing for some of this marketing and promotional.
It pays for the marketing.
So the next slide shows the Ridge 5 Corporate Park, and this includes the trail that runs along Johnson Creek. And the next slide is another... Nine. Zero. They're doing the infrastructure right now.
Cleared the land, yeah.
And they got planning commission approval for that, right? As well? So they're, they're ready to, ready to go?
Yes, they're in the building department stage for that. And the next slide is just another render that includes the path that is to be proposed. Then directly, so that's the southwest corner of Ridge and 5, and then on the southeast corner of Ridge and 5, where the silos were, this is the flex spec tenant building that Hillside Development is also building, and they have tentative site plan approval for this. This shows the VTEC Business Park, you can see the CSX Railroad to the south and the water tower in the northeast corner.
Okay, could, could you stop there for a second, then? So where is that, the prior slide, where is that going?
That's the silos.
Go, go back.
That's the flex building, okay, so, no, no, so go ahead.
Go up, no, back, up, no. No, Bob, you're just, you're spinning out of control.
Oh, the other way.
I'm getting dizzy.
All right.
Yes, exactly.
So the, the building that Laura was just referring to is, is basically here or over here?
It's off the map.
It's off the map.
Yeah, that's where the silos were.
Where the silos were, it's over here.
Oh, so that's not part of the VTEC Business Park?
No.
Correct.
Ah, okay. Now we're going to travel through space and time.
We're going through space and time.
VTEC is the name of the old Dehoko Prison site, so this is VTEC. This would be where that other building is that Laura just showed us.
Okay, and who owned that property?
That was owned by the Michigan Land Bank, and it was sold to Hillside.
By the land bank?
Yes, sir.
And then they've gotten some kind of approval from this township?
They have tentative site plan approval, correct.
From the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay, yep.
Also in this vicinity is Polytech, the, the new build that I mentioned. They just installed their landscaping.
Okay, I'm sorry to slow us down again, but the VTEC, then, what is the status of that?
They received their tentative site plan approval, and then they're working with Eagle on some permits, and they received a site plan extension a month or two ago, I think in May.
We're really, Jack, we're waiting on the state of Michigan to give us the money, give MITC the money to rehabilitate the old prison site. We have landfill throughout this area, some of the landfill is zero landfill, and other areas, it's as deep as 14 feet. So we have to drive, much like we just had with this courthouse grill thing, we have, we have to drive pilings into the ground. We have the underground tunnel system for the prison is still under there, that has to be demolished, and that's loaded with asbestos and other stuff. So there are still cleanup work, a lot of cleanup work that has to be done here. The site is still owned by the state of Michigan Land Bank, and it is their responsibility to clean it up. So we are hoping that they will do so at a time at which they can afford it. COVID has clearly stopped this cleanup process, and we're hoping that the state will reengage soon.
I'm sorry to have to ask you to repeat, how has COVID slowed or stopped this? I don't understand that.
Because the state has lost $3 billion by their own estimates, and they're not, they're holding on to their money. They're not, they're not doling out money to anybody right now.
They're not having meetings, that they should have been having meetings on.
What, what money are we talking about? That's... Yeah, the, the state has all, as, as you well know, Mr. Supervisor, there are so many pots of money that the state has, what money are we talking about here?
Well, this money could come from a variety of sources. It could come from the, there's MEDC money, there is money that the land bank might be able to access, there is economic development money that's outside of MEDC, and there's also money in the Michigan Department of Treasury that apparently they can use as well.
Yeah, then there's a $10 million earmark, as I recall, for a piece of property west of this township.
Yes.
That is just vacant farmland, as opposed to here, where the state actually owns this property. The state has the responsibility to clean this up, and you're telling us that they're, here's another legal term, they're diddling us.
Yeah, well, they're being very prudent right now and holding on to their, their limited resources because of the COVID crisis.
I disagree 100%.
Okay. Continue.
Bob, you can advance, or trustee Dorchevitz, you can advance two slides.
Polytech, back up.
Wabasto.
Well, let's talk about Polytech, we were kind of stopped midway.
Okay, I, this was the last greenfield site in the Metro West Business Park that was developed, and they are, are almost there with their CFO, and they had just installed their landscaping a week or two ago.
Chris, say that again.
Um, this is just, like, southeast of Addient.
Yeah, across the street.
Across the street. What exactly do they do? What, what, what is Polytech? Does anybody know? Okay. So they're basically in this area right here?
Yes, I, I believe that they do...
Or is that it? I think that's it.
That's it, right there.
That's it, sorry, guys. It's over here.
Yeah. I think they do vibration testing.
Okay, well, it's right here. They were building it at that time.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that's Polytech.
Okay.
We're gonna move on now, that was my bad.
And then here's two photos of Wabasto at Haggerty and Schoolcraft, and they are still working on finalizing their landscaping. They, they are able to plant per their own timetable.
Those are two bad choices.
Within the win...
Of my economic development.
Go ahead, Laura.
The township requires that they plant within the window of May through, I believe, October 31st, that's the cutoff. Within that window, they're allowed to plant, I think, in the case of Wabasto, they were maybe a little bit behind schedule, but they had already selected, I believe, you know, those plantings and, and needed to install them.
So you don't allow planting in March and April?
No.
Why? We need to change that, that's one of the best things to plant trees.
It, it depends with the frost levels, that's concurrent with Northville and Novi.
It's hot, it's, it's warmer here, we're further south.
Look at that, that may be why plantings are failing.
Well, I, I will say that if the request comes in from a developer to the building department to install those plantings and the weather is accurate, we'll consult with the landscape architect, and we'll allow that.
The frost of the ground in Michigan is typically gone by the end of March, so.
Could you just back up? Could you back up to Wabasto?
No, no, not that kind of frost. It's the frost, frozen ground, that's what she means by frost, not frost on the surface on the pumpkin.
Just a couple other things about Wabasto, because I know the state of Michigan has come up in this meeting already a couple times. The state did commit and has, I believe, paid $4.5 million towards this project because they created at a minimum 450 brand-new jobs. These are not jobs that are being sent from Troy or Livonia or something like that. These are brand-new jobs, they just held a job fair a couple, about a week ago or last week, that was very well-attended, and I think they're gonna have up to, I, I think, more than 500 jobs ultimately at this site. We don't know for sure what's happening here, but they will be doing fabrication of automotive components, we believe, for a future Ford electric product that would more, will more than likely be built at the Wayne Assembly Plant. When, if Rivian may have a role in that, I don't know. I know that the Ford-Rivian relationship has had some ups and downs lately, but there's, there's clearly a connection between this facility, Ford, the Wayne Assembly Plant, and, and I still think Rivian for a, a future Ford electric product.
Well, the press said they were making the Bronco sunroof, or some roof systems for Bronco.
Yeah, well, it's also that, and we were told it's, it may be a pickup truck or SUV that doesn't even exist yet, that will, wouldn't arrive until maybe the 2023 market, that's just, it's still under design right now. Okay, Five and Beck?
Yes, this is Taco Bell and the new Commercial Plaza.
So the new Commercial Plaza here will be Panera's. The Panera Downtown Plymouth will be closing, and they will be moving here. Yeah, it is closed, and then this will be, right now, it's still kind of subject to what's gonna go in here, they've been talking about maybe a...
Retail.
Retail, dry cleaner, pharmacy, sort of something here, maybe. Food-related, related to the, all the other industries around here. I know that Jimmy John's, I think the Jimmy John's on further down the street is one of the busiest in, in the state, because of all of the development that's already in this corridor on both sides.
When is the Panera's expected to open?
Laura, any idea?
I'm not, I don't have a new timeline.
Yeah, I mean, they're working on it right now, and obviously, things have been delayed because of COVID, so I, I would hope I...
The state's involved?
Huh?
You mean the state's involved?
No, no, COVID, everything's COVID. So hopefully by the end of the year, I, I wouldn't say that about this, these will be finished, but, but I would think Panera wants to get in there soon.
Uh, Laura, there is a shortage of medical office buildings in Plymouth area. Now with the aftermath of COVID, some of these restaurants may not ever open.
Right.
Is, are you seeing any movement to occupy these commercial faces, spaces with medical?
I don't, I'm not so sure that I agree with that statement, because Henry Ford is building here, Beaumont is building at Six, Six and Haggerty. U of M is across the street from there. Oh, you mean... Independent physicians?
Um, somewhat, there's a couple cases when we get to the next section about remodel and reinvestment, that I think we'll touch on that. This next slide here is a flex building, spec building at Fog and Helm Street, so this is a new build, and is estimated for construction either late this year or early next year. The Amazon facility, or future Amazon facility on Haggerty, just south of Ann Arbor Road. This distribution center is hopefully gonna be up and running by the holiday season, and then in 2021, they're looking at coming back and doing some expansions to the building once they get over that holiday season.
I'm sorry.
It's the old Spartan warehouse on Haggerty.
When did this happen?
It's happened.
Well, it's already been built.
It's pre-existing.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, yeah. But when did Amazon come onto the scene?
They moved fast. They came in here, seriously, they came in here probably about four months ago, and they said, we want the building. They're taking the whole thing over. This is the, this is what we, I would call the Mobus Building right now, but it's the old Spartan distributor building. It's about 350,000 square feet right now, and they do want to build an expansion in, in the future. But basically, this will be a, trucks, Amazon trucks will come in, they will distribute packages, small packages, letters, smaller, smaller items, not big items. Big, the big stuff is still gonna be in Livonia. And then they will be loaded onto smaller electric vehicles in the future that will be made by Rivian, and then they will be scattering around southeast Michigan delivering stuff to people.
So it won't be a distribution center, it's a redistribution center. So distribution centers bring things here, and then they take them from this spot to another spot.
So it'll be like in the cartoons where you order it and the truck pulls up about 30 seconds later?
Yep. So...
Be a drone heliport, I think, over here, I don't know about that, I'm not...
This backs up to a residential area, what are we doing to ensure? Because there's been a long point of contention with that resident, not there, it's to the east.
Marlin and Bruce.
Yeah.
Well, no, he's talking about your place, Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry's house.
No, Jerry's house.
No, it, excuse me, it, excuse me, it's to the, to the west, start, Southworth, Marlin?
Well, okay, well, that's up here, then, yeah. That's the, that's the...
Yeah, sorry, okay. But that area had, those people have always...
Yeah.
Been concerned about this, and now we're going to have much more activity, so we need to be mindful of that.
And I don't believe any of the expansion is slated for this northern area, Laura?
Correct, they're not proposing any encroachment to the north, and they have acknowledged that residential area and are looking at doing some additional landscaping on the north and also along Haggerty to the east.
Improvements to the roads as well.
Is this... That's Wayne County's responsibility, as you know, so.
Is this the first public announcement about this?
Well, it's, properly, I mean, it's, it's an existing use. It's zoned industrial.
I'm not complaining. I'm just saying, is this the first?
Yeah, I guess, I would say, yeah, publicly.
Well, that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't call that either.
I mean, it's, it's, it's properly zoned. It's already operational as a distribution and trucking facility, and it's basically just gonna be under new ownership. And there are tenants in here right now. We are trying to, Gary, I hope, we are trying to work with them to relocate them elsewhere in Plymouth Township, so they don't, they don't leave us.
You're talking about a lot of jobs.
Oh, the jobs at this Amazon facility, we're probably looking at 750.
Minimum of 500, yeah.
This slide is of Park &amp; Eats, the food truck park at Echols and Schoolcraft. And this is pretty popular in that area for the local businesses, and there's been a lot of positive comments from the city of Livonia, as that's the boundary as well.
So Ms. Haw, isn't this a function of the other Amazon facility largely?
Close by, right across the street.
They do support that. There's another large wine distributor in that area, and then there's a number of different.
Biggest liquor distributor in Michigan.
Yeah.
Really?
So where? Where were those, where will those 750 Amazon employees at Joy and Haggerty go for their lunch?
Well, hopefully, they'll go to the Outlet Building at Henry Ford Health System.
Yes, or they'll go to Leo's Coney Island, or they'll maybe go to a new places that might open between LA Fitness and Leo's Coney.
Yeah, because there's vacant space nearby, as I recall, just right over here, that maybe some new entrepreneurs might wanna build restaurants on.
There's a perfect location right next to us. Yeah, I'm surprised it's been vacant for so long.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's the food truck court here. Where's the massive liquor distribution place?
To the south.
Is it in Plymouth Township?
It's that monster one right there, yeah.
Huh?
It's in the city of Livonia.
That's in Livonia.
Okay.
And the Amazon facility is.
On Echols.
On Echols.
Echols and Amryne.
Now you're way up north now.
I did it again. Sorry about that, guys.
Spinning again in space.
Where?
No. Well, that's the Park &amp; Eats. But you're, Bob has to fan out if he wants to, if you want to look at the.
Laura, what is Park &amp; Eats doing? They're adding something or making changes?
There's Amazon.
They did come back to the Planning Commission because they wanted to have a more permanent enclosure area so that they could be open during the colder months. That wasn't part of their original permit. They just wanted to be seasonal.
Zoning board.
What is it they're proposing? What's it look like?
They have like a pergola tent-like structure that they have in the colder months.
So it's a fabric?
Correct, yeah, it's not a. Correct.
Zoning board made them take down some of their Christmas lights that they had up there, because they weren't part of actual zoning. So it's.
Christmas lights? Really? They took them down?
Well, yeah.
They were not Christmas lights. They were, well, they were like permanent lights.
Yeah.
It was really.
Party lights, party, party lights.
Yeah, I like that better.
Okay, well, let's get back on track here. Park &amp; Eats? Oh, whoa, oh, no, no, we skipped over somebody.
No, yeah.
Okay, General Drive.
So this is another self-storage facility in RV Parking. This is just south of Ann Arbor Trail. There's the, or Ann Arbor Road, the Stow and Go Center, and then behind that, there's kind of this landlocked parcel that also abuts the railroad, and this is an expansion of that facility.
So on this map, this, would this be Ann Arbor Road here?
Yeah.
Or here, or here? Oh, I'm sorry, no, this, this would be.
Want me to pull it up here?
Hate it when he does that. No, I misread the map, so I haven't looked at it that closely.
It's right over here.
So, so it would go, it's gonna go right in here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Gary, do you, can you tell me what the status is of the bowling alley here? There's another for-sale sign out in front, and I don't, have you heard, at one point, they were gonna turn it into a more of a family-friendly Dave and Buster's sort of thing, but that.
Well, it's gonna become the new hottest bowling alley in Michigan.
Because the guys that bought it have one in Royal Oak or Oak Park that is just, everybody goes in parties in the bowling alley. But I think COVID hurt them, and I think a little bit about the storage on the side has hurt them as people have been driving through their parking lot, so I'm not surprised that the for-sale sign goes back up again, but.
Is the for-sale sign for the Outlet near Ann Arbor Road, or is it for the building?
Boy, I don't know. It's a good question. I, I just have not seen a lot of action at the plaza lanes. I, it seems to be open once in a while during COVID, but I don't, the grand plans to redevelop that have just never happened.
They put up a lot of opposition for the funding on General Drive for the.
SAD.
The SAD, because obviously, they've got a big chunk of land on General Drive.
Yeah.
So I think that, that also hurt them.
Okay.
And then this is the Quickpass Car Wash where the former Denny's facility is on Ann Arbor Road. They've revised their layout and their facade several times, but I think this is the final one. And we really hope that they demolish that existing structure within the coming months. This is at Five and Haggerty Road, the southeast corner. It's the proposed Boleski Funeral Home. They have tentative site plan approval from the Planning Commission and are working with Wayne County and hopefully seeking final approval in either August or September.
So that is up at. Stop.
Is it across from the Nursery?
No, it's right here. This is the.
Right on the corner.
This, this the Greek, this the Greek Orthodox Church, or the Greek church, and so it's right, it'd be right, right here.
And then Henry Ford Health System, of course, right across the street. And the image in the right-hand corner there is of the proposed Outlet. That's closer to the intersection.
So that would be right at Haggerty and Ann Arbor Road.
How's that coming with Wayne County?
It's coming along. The county has agreed to their various road requests. We have received some preliminary drawings now for the building itself. This has clearly been impacted by COVID because healthcare just took a beating all over the place. So they, they are still committed to the project. They have a crew out, crew out there right now. They've cleared the land. They, it's just one of these things that's been delayed because of COVID again. But they are totally committed to the project, and we keep in touch with them on a, on a regular basis.
This next section deals with significant reinvestment, so these are major upgrades to existing buildings, minor expansions, additions, and in the past year, there's been.
Hey Laura, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, of course.
Because we're talking about new development. One thing we did not include there, because we really just don't know what the status is right now, is this self-storage facility that was approved by the township a long, long time ago.
Off of Sheldon?
Off of Sheldon, right between the M14 and, and the railroad overpass. Strange location. Right now, we're not seeing any action there at all. And so we have, we've talked about it internally, and we're, we're trying to track the developers down to see if they're, if they've abandoned the site or, or what. But it's, it's, it's gonna be a problem for us because there's a significant erosion there. They moved the land around considerably, earth, earth-moving, and if they have, if they are gonna walk away, if they're gonna abandon the project, we, we've gotta stabilize that, that area.
So for reinvestment, 38 different commercial industrial expansions or additions, so this does not include any residential. And then 20 million estimated of investment. This includes Atlas Tube, which can commonly be thought of as the city of Livonia, but this is in the township. They are doing a couple minor building expansions, but as part of that, and the important part is that they're adding new landscaping along the freeway, which I think will really brighten up how that looks for regional drivers.
Is this the general area where it's gonna be?
Yeah.
That was triggered because they were seeking a new site plan?
Correct.
They didn't do that as a voluntary action.
Correct. We, they, they're not doing landscaping on the entire site, but we worked with them to kind of upgrade the most visible location.
They asked us earlier this year in a retention visit, what could they do to help the township? And that was one of the things that was offered up to them. Obviously, there must have been something else in it for them, but, you know, they did ask.
It also helps because they're, they're constructing additions to the building with Wayne County. It's reducing their impervious surface by planting these new green spaces and reducing that gravel area. Suburban Cadillac is doing a remodel and facelift just here on Ann Arbor Road. This is one render. They're working with Wayne County to finalize their permits, but we expect them to get started on construction very shortly. And they are also adding a great deal of landscaping to that site as well, so that'll be a nice visual improvement.
What does Wayne County have to approve on this dealership that is existing?
Stormwater. I believe they, they have not yet received their storm. They either need a minor stormwater permit, or, or they may get a waiver from the county. There is a possibility that they may get a waiver.
Yeah, I talked to them the other day. I mean, it sounds like they're gonna be required to do stormwater detention and pretreatment and the whole nine.
So they're, they're putting more hard surface down?
No. They're covering existing hard surface. They're gonna take this building here, just scroll down a little bit south. So they're going to expand this building outward to about here. It's, and really just more of a facade improvement. I, you know, if they need us to intervene at some point, I, I just.
It seems over the top when it comes to stormwater.
I agree, Chuck. I go, I do.
Almost no change.
No, I mean, they're, they're just.
It's the reconstruction of the parking lot is why they're saying it. I mean, they're just going by the rulebook of you disturb the land, therefore, we're gonna force you to do.
The county's working with them.
I mean, we may need the county to back off on this one. I mean, I, I'm the guy who used to issue these permits, and I would never, I would just say, "Look, you're, it's not a significant redevelopment, so."
Right.
Their property goes, you know, very far south down to Massey Drive, and as part of that, they are adding, they're upgrading their entire landscape area to become compliant with current standards. So I think there might be some, you know, opportunity with Wayne County to discuss that as well.
Maybe like an offset or something, or build, I don't know, build a pond in the back or something. Whatever, we'll work on it. I saw a picture with cats in it. See those cats? Look at the cats.
So this next image is of Gray's Greenhouse.
Yeah.
Which is an adaptive reuse, and they've had some, you know, small commercial events there, which have been successful for, you know, planting techniques and that sort of thing, so it's kind of a unique destination in the township. And then Hawk Dentistry, of course, across from Kroger at Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road. This was a major facelift and renovation. The before and after is on the slide.
The before is on the slide? Yeah, they're on the left. That used to be a bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a bank.
I would call that disco architecture.
This, this is a good example of a financial institution that was repurposed for a medical facility, so this is one example.
Yeah, they did a great job. Bob, could you do the aerial shot of that? Now, this is still on a very large parcel, and I know that prior to COVID, the, the doctor was already talking about expanding out into the parking lot and doing an add-on. So we wish him all the best, and hopefully, he can build upon his existing site.
If you had a chance to go by last weekend, he was giving free car washes.
Yeah. This is partially a relocation from Canton. Yeah. And he lives in the township too.
The next two slides detail the Burrows Building, so another example of adaptive reuse. This is one of the floors in the tower. There's a new tenant, United Road. And then, of course, we have the ongoing expansion and use of the facility by Rivian.
Oh, here, we had nice pictures there.
What is the business of United Road?
This is gonna be their headquarters.
Where's that at, Laura? Sorry.
It's, it's, it's the Burrows Building.
Plymouth.
So that new gigantic parking lot that's right on.
Oh, across from Lou LaRiche Chevrolet.
They're, they're in this portion, right, Laura?
That's the name of the building. That's not a road.
Well, it's the Burrows Building, but it's, United Road is one of the major tenants.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, I got it.
Now, Rivian, as we read in the papers a couple weeks ago, they're moving a lot of their engineering staff out to California, which I think is gonna be a big mistake. But they're, they, I still believe that they're gonna, they're not leaving Plymouth Township, and I think they'll eventually move into the rest of the, the Burrows Building.
There's already plans to get, fill those.
Yeah, and then we also have now a big new parking lot that's been built here to accommodate the expected influx of employees right in that area. And you know, it goes back again to, right here is the, is the Courthouse Grill Site, and, and we want to be able to tap into this energy that's gonna be coming here with all of these people who will be working in this corridor from, because Wabasto is up here, and we've got all of this great development happening just in this, in this corridor. Locke is expanding, you know, they're not physically right now, but they're, they're, they're running 24/7. They're refurbishing military equipment. We've got an interest in, in the parcels up here. It's too soon to put it on a, on a list like this, but there's a lot of action happening here, and we want to be able to, to tap into that and improve this corridor, because it's such a mess. And that's the county, and we've been working with them, but, you know, everything stopped with COVID on that one.
Signet is a, this is their headquarters on General Drive, and they remodeled this facility.
Took an existing building, spent four to, four to five million dollars just to take the existing building and make it look better. It's, it's amazing building.
And they're a longtime Plymouth business. This next example is Corporal Sanino. So this is across from Los Trace and the former Denny's on Ann Arbor Road. This is another example, not, not exactly medical offices, but they are in the medical industry, so they converted the financial institution. They enclosed the drive-through area as conference and office space. And they do the administrative work for hospice care.
So you mean they do the billing?
Yes, and I, I think just the overall management. And then this picture is of Audient. That was the outdoor courtyard that they provided for their employees. They had, you know, some minor expansions this past year for the facility, but I think it's important to see that businesses are also taking an investment in the culture for their employees, and that's an important aspect in attracting and retaining talent.
Audient's becoming very active on the MITC now as well. Who is Audient?
So Bob, if you could go back to the map.
So here, we have, you can see some of the new construction that was done, that is, that's now complete, but they actually have gone a little bit more up into this area. And, and then Bob, if you can pull out even further, just to remind everybody that Audient, oh, pull out even further. Further. Good. So Audient still owns this humongous parcel, which is part of the MITC. So they're a very active member of the MITC. They're going through still some corporate restructuring and reorganization, but they're sitting on a major asset there, and they know it, and we, we are always trying to work with them on. And we, we are always trying to work with them on new opportunities.
Yep, and then this next slide is of Phoenix Mill, of course. And they are actually coming to the Planning Commission tomorrow evening for a final site plan. And they hope to at least start operation of their restaurant facility this year. And I think if you've driven by recently, you can see the amount of investment that they've been making in the facade.
The new glass alone is beautiful. Yeah.
So what'd they end up doing about a parking situation? What are, there was some discussion about parking issues?
Yeah, so the, the site is a bit tight and just in terms of, you know, it's partially located in a flood, flood plain. There is a lot of natural vegetation that they wanted to limit the impact of. So they're working with Wayne County on exploring some other alternative parking situations nearby. But until that really gets ironed out, which might take a while, especially, you know, with COVID the past four months, we've, we've kind of arrived at a conclusion that they have the available parking onsite to fulfill the standards of the zoning ordinance for the restaurant use. And for some banquet event operations at a limited capacity. So that's what's being proposed tomorrow night by the applicant. And this would allow them to get started with the restaurant and do some very limited banquet event space, or events while meeting the ordinance minimums. And then if other arrangements can be worked out with the county in the future, then that could be revisited their, their maximum capacity.
So they're considering leasing some space from some surrounding property owners?
Uh, that, that's potentially one option, yes. This slide just highlights some of the important partnerships and relationships that the township has really tried to maintain and enhance over the past couple of years. Schoolcraft College in particular has been a very important player in the MITC redevelopment. And then this next section deals with quality of life. And as part of this, we talk a little bit about the residential investment. So within the past year, there's been 23 new residential dwellings that have been constructed and with about eight million invested, not just in those eight units, but also in any home upgrades or additions, any construction permits. The table on the next slide details the larger housing developments. So this, this excludes anyone who's just building a single-family home on one lot. But these are the cluster housing options that come before the Planning Commission in this body or under a PUD. And we have this broken out by price range and square footage. And there, there is a bit of a range. It's important to note that Margate, which is listed on here, fourth row down. This is a single-family neighborhood that will be before the township tomorrow night at the Planning Commission and then later in August. And these are really geared towards family-forming households, which is an important component that we haven't really seen in the past couple of years.
Where is Margate?
The one up McComber, right?
That is the one that is south, southeast of Pioneer.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Canton Center and.
It's just south of the church. So the entrance is off Canton Center Road?
Correct, as proposed.
Right here.
So this is the area, this is the proposed area. And then there would be, I think one of these homes would be purchased, taken out. And then there would be a, an, a, an entry off of Canton Center.
Yes, it's actually owned by the church as well. They use it as a, I think the rector.
Okay, so could you just briefly describe what you meant by the different type of house, housing?
Not super expensive.
Sure, so if you look at the price range.
That's a technical legal term, is it?
Not a boatload of money, just like a.
You see, it's only 1,800 square feet. You know, so it's not the gigantic houses that we're all used to.
Well, these are not gigantic either, but look at the price per square foot on these. It's amazing. It's 300 bucks a foot.
There's two of those.
So what would be the expected price range, do you think?
I believe, I believe, the applicant can probably answer this more accurately tomorrow evening. But just some discussions, I believe it's about like 350, 400.
In the threes.
Ideal for family forming, and it's also between two, you know, early education facilities. So it's a, it's a good contender for that location.
Oh yeah, you got Isbister here and you got Pioneer.
That's a great location.
And the high school right down the Canton Center. Yeah, beautiful location.
And then the next slide details some real estate statistics that Trustee Heitman has procured. And the change is listed underneath from last year's statistics. So the average sale price has gone up about 10%. The average price per square foot is about 3% increase. Average days on the market is down four days. And the 30-year mortgage is about the same rate as last year. So those are, those are positive statistics for the community for sure. And then when we talk about quality of life, right, it's not just our residential dwellings, but it's also what community amenities does the township offer. And so one example of that is the Miller Park Pavilion, which was well-attended. There was the creation of the Environmental Leadership Commission. And their mission statement is listed. And together with the Historic District Commission that was created and included in the presentation last year, I think that's something that's rather unique to this community. We also have the Downtown Development Authority with improvements going on along the corridor. Ann Arbor Road corridor, that is. And as part of that, we have continually been working with CSX on making some improvements, including pedestrian improvements along that section to make it safer and to improve. There's a lot of rainwater that collects there to improve that.
Do you have anything you can tell us specifically right now about that, or is it still in process?
CSX, we've been working with them for, I mean, for over a year now.
Decades.
Spalding Decker is, is putting together some revised drawings that CSX has requested based on our latest conversation.
The DDA committed $15,000 to work with CSX in developing a new vision for this, for this overpass. In a perfect world, I would just like to see the whole thing bulldozed and replaced because it's falling apart and it's, it's an eyesore. But we're going to continue to work with them and in the hopes that we can take this, if they don't replace it, the, we'll at least make it more visual, visually appealing and more pedestrian-friendly. Yeah, a little bit of paint. Since we're on DDA, it appears that the irrigation system is spotty. So we have some areas that are very dry and others that are okay. I'd like someone to take a look at that, please. It doesn't look like our contractor maybe getting, not getting feedback to you or whatever. And then we're on the third season now with Fifth Third Bank. It's not in the DDA, but it borders on Mill Street. They've done absolutely nothing for three years, let it die off. This fall is coming up. Might be a good idea that they could, if they have the money, to try to clean it up a little bit and improve it. They don't, don't have to spend a lot, but maybe needed to have some work done on it.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about what was the Township Hall at one time?
Yes, it's on the Mill Street side. Chuck, if you have any specific locations along the DDA corridor that you don't think are getting watered, let us know because there are, there are some reasons for that. There's been damage that was done by contractors on when they, when they upgraded the Comerica Bank on Ann Arbor Road. They wa, they cut through some irrigation there. The county has damaged some stuff as well. We, we do try, we, we do get reimbursed if, if we can prove it to them. Also, the state of Michigan, in their infinite wisdom, decided to put new traffic signals at, at Ann Arbor Road and Main Street. They never told us. They, I think they thought we were all in the city, so they cut through some things as well.
This next slide shows the residential tree planting program that was reenacted this year and successfully participated. Approximately 70 trees have been requested and will be installed this fall as a result.
How does this work again?
And this is a, the funding for these trees comes out of any payment in lieu that has been paid by developers. So these trees have to go in the public right of way. They can't be on your personal property within your front or backyard. And they were offered to residents and also HOAs. And then another.
This 70 is not a subset of the 80 in the nine-acre triangle property.
Nope.
Correct, completely separate project. And Relief was also another tree planting program that occurred last fall at Township Park. And those trees still are thriving today.
Are they being watered in this hot climate?
While they're alive.
Probably should be watering.
We'll talk to Eric Anderson about that.
They might not live through this dry weather.
I wanted to mention the master plan update that the township is undergoing this year. This is required every five years, and the last plan was in 2015. And on the slide right here is a, just a, a screen capture of the future land use map. And this is important for planning for areas that might undergo change and so that we can keep preserving the high quality of life in the township. So one example that needs to be revisited that the commission will be taking a look at is the Schoolcraft Corridor between Eccles and Hagerty. And we can expect to see this later this year with the board.
I mean, you're going to rezone it?
Uh, it, it would be a, a change in the designation on the future land use plan. So that it would be compatible for future rezonings.
Have the current businesses indicated that they're going to be selling or changing?
And there has been some interest, especially on the north side of Schoolcraft Road, where there's just a mix of different small residential parcels. We've seen, we've had a lot of inquiries about, about.
Bob, could you go to, get on your map and go to like Schoolcraft and, and Hagerty where Wabasto is?
Schoolcraft and Hagerty.
Stop. Stop. So here is where Wabasto is right now. We have had, actually all of this is Wabasto. We've had interest now by other companies, I, I'm not gonna mention them, who, this is a junkyard. And this is a landscaping company. We've had interest in these two parcels for a total building redevelopment. To my knowledge, I think all of these parcels now, Gary, are for sale in some form or another. That's the Seek Temple. But all of these parcels are subject to development because they're, they've been landlocked due to the freeway over the years.
The next slide shows a photo of the fire department. Just wanted to congratulate Chief Phillips on all the great work this past year and increasing the rating for the safety of our township. This slide shows a historic marker for the city of Ypsilanti. But that's because we don't have the townships currently made yet. But it is in progress, and that will be a wonderful addition to the front of Township Hall offices.
Are we still on target for September was the original plan for that? Yeah, I, it's, it's coming. We'll, we'll hopefully have it installed, but we'll have a little ceremony and we'll do it either in September or October.
See, these are things from economic development standpoint that we kind of take for granted. But businesses coming in want to know that we're doing these kinds of things. They wanna look around and see these kinds of things. And it, it basically helps sell our township even more to, to a business coming in.
Correct, because they're not just selling it to, they're, they're trying to attract the right type of workforce and the right talent. And a lot of that comes with attracting significant others and families.
You just mentioned workforce. Now we're back to COVID. Do you anticipate that some companies are, the demand for commercial office, per office space will not be as robust because people are finding out they can get everybody to work at home for a lower wage?
So there are definitely, in the, in the planning world, there are many impacts that we expect to see on land use and, and how that will change the landscape of the properties that we have zoned for commercial and residential and how home occupations work. We do expect to see quite a change to that.
I think you will also see a major trend, and it's happening across the country now in people who are leaving large cities. Large cities were cool a couple of years ago, and now they're not. So people are, people are coming back out to the suburbs or moving out to the suburbs. So I think we're gonna be in a really great location for residential development and for more flexible workspace that, that will be.
You saw two flex buildings already on the plans. And, and that is, so I have my house, my home office, but maybe I need to meet with three or four other people. I'm not bringing them into my house. Where can I go? And I'm not going to McDonald's. I wanna go to an office space. And that's where that flex space is really coming in. And it's everything from two people up to 50 or 60 people. So some of these places are getting very nice.
And, and they would be project-based as well. So rather than just, you, you might have a project that lasts six months, so just get everybody together for that. And, yeah. So here's another quality of life project in the Rain Garden.
Yep, at Township Park. And then the next two slides deal with the special assessment districts that have been going on in the township. One for the industrial corridor and one for residential. And I just wanted to note the participation levels in the 2020 census. And I think that's really outstanding and kind of shows that level of community involvement.
This is actually a sign that will be going up on one of the billboards.
It's up, it's up.
It's up now, okay. So it's up now, this is at, which one is it, M14?
275, right here.
You guys remember. Electronic sign. Yeah, it's an electronic billboard. It's one of those things, it goes back many years when the electronic billboards first went up. We sued, we were in court. But as part of the settlement, we get free use of the two billboards, one on 275 and one on M14. As long as we develop the graphics with them, they can, they'll put it up for a couple of weeks. And actually, Gary, I've seen these last year. I saw them up at, on I-96.
Yeah.
Out, out in Novi. It was great.
You mean you saw Plymouth?
Yeah, I saw, I saw, this is this year's.
They wanna put our stuff everywhere.
They, they end up, they end up just putting it in the rotation and electronically it goes out all over southeast Michigan. I saw it in Novi.
And this blue is bright.
Oh, good.
Very bright.
Yeah, this, this is our, our sign for this year.
We get once a year for two weeks?
Once a year for two weeks each sign, yeah.
Two weeks and two weeks, so we get basically a month of, so two weeks on M14 and two weeks on 275.
We've used it in the past also to promote the golf course. We had a golf course sign last year as well. Okay.
All right, this next section I'm gonna turn over to Trustee Heitman to discuss a little bit about retention and economic development in practice.
So obviously, we still have challenges. We still have opportunities. We were close, obviously the picture of Dur. We, we had somebody before COVID that was very, very, very interested in the building. Their money fell through when the business kind of had to spend money someplace else. We still have the challenge of the former Steak and Ale on the corner. But I think Henry Ford will definitely push that. The former owners of that facility have passed on now, and their family is a little bit more anxious to sell than they were. So that's, I hate to say that's a plus for us, but it's in our favor. Obviously, next door property, as Laura alluded to, behind the Elks. The Locke Performance, they're in no real big hurry to, to sell that last little piece on the corner. We do have property on Ann Arbor Road, you know, the Baskin Robbins facility next door, which was the, the vacuum cleaner, which now moved. Those kinds of facilities. Concept Drive still has a couple of spots open. Five in Napier, the Detroit. Five in Napier, the Detroit parcel. They've come to us with some crazy wild ideas and we've been turning down racetracks and things like that. That doesn't make sense. And that is across the street from the dump. And then as Laura alluded, the Schoolcraft parcels for redevelopment, both on the north and the south side of Schoolcraft. So what, what do we, we talk about all these jobs that we're, that we're going to get. You know, when 100 new jobs come in for say Wabasto, what does that actually mean? Well, it means more than 100 jobs that are going to be there. It also means 64 new non-manufacturing jobs. And as you can see the breakdown of what those are. But the key piece, 61 new school enrollments. Schoolcraft is very anxious for us to work with them to say, okay, if we're going to have school enrollments come out of Plymouth Canton High Schools, why don't they come over here and we can work with them? Population increases in the area as best as we can. And seven new retail establishments. We've been pushing and pushing and Laura's been doing a great job in making sure that we don't forget retail establishments as part of this. And you know, over a million and a half in retail sales in durable and non-durable. You know, the auto supply stores and everybody else and the restaurants we do have are actually seeing increases and will see even more based on the businesses coming in.
Okay.
And the total jobs created by one new job is actually one and a half for the county. You know, our area is a little bit more, 1.6 and the state's actually getting 1.6. So you see one new job is actually generating a lot more than one new job. So each new construction job, we get three new jobs total. So that's a, that's a big thing. So all the new housing, we're coming in, we're going to get new things popping up. Business retention, since 2017, I've been on 292. As you can see, 2020, since COVID, we've slowed down. I want to tell you about a great retention visit I had today. Worked with the state in Wayne County. The company is Materialize. They're on Plymouth Oaks. They make hospital products with 3D printers. So they started out when, when COVID first started, they made door openers for everybody and they passed them out free all throughout the township. So you don't have to touch a doorknob, you didn't have to close the door. It was actually a doorknob opening device. They've made face shields, printed masks. They did an alternative to ventilators that they're selling, a lot of them in Europe. Right now there's 82 employees. They've lost 11 since COVID. A lot of people that were on the fence about retiring basically said, I think we're done. But they have a facility in Ann Arbor, they just opened, that makes 3D printed airways for children. So they work with Mott and U of M Hospital. They actually make airways for babies out of 3D printing. And this, this company's amazing. They're here, they love being here. I've met with them now three different times, pretty much once a year. The things they're doing are, you know, they're just, they're just tremendous. They want to come back and talk about a parking lot expansion next year. I hope you guys give it to them. So that's a key piece, business retention. Now you see Wayne County, we have a small business grant. They just came up with $50 million grant. They're giving companies up to $10,000. There's some requirements that you have to be brick and mortar, you have to have a certain amount of people. They did an earlier business grant. I helped score those grants for the county. I did about 150 different ones that I helped score and we gave a lot of money away to Wayne County. There were only a few in Plymouth Township that applied and they got the money that they applied for. So this is, this is one that they've just extended this now into another two weeks. So you see the application period up on top has been extended and Wayne County loves working with us and the businesses.
Where can we get some follow-up data on the outcome of this money that was given away? In other words, how long did the company stay in business? Did they really hire the people? Where's the validation? Is there someplace we can go to get it?
Wayne County's putting that together. Dave Schreiber from Economic Development is making sure and Khalil Rahal is doing a heck of a job in making sure that it's actually being spent where it's supposed to be spent. So yeah, and they will share that. So as long as I'm in office, I'll be able to give that to you guys and do that as well.
Thank you very much. Terrific presentation. There's a lot of great stuff going on despite the challenges that we face. So congratulations to both of you. Thank you Gary very much for basically volunteering your time on behalf of the township. And Laura, thank you for your tireless efforts as well.
I echo those comments.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all set. We're going to move on. Jerry, how much time do you think you need for this next item?
I'm just going to need maybe 10 minutes.
Okay, let's keep moving forward. So item 10.
Mr. Supervisor and members of the board, this is of course something that's, I think not only near and dear to my heart as clerk and someone who deals with elections and voter rolls and the participation of people's exercising their fundamental rights. I know it, I know it's important to all of you and I know that it's important to all of the people in Plymouth Township. And really, this is, is the kind of thing that's impactful to the, the whole state and the whole nation. When you start talking about the fundamental right to vote is one of the most sacred things that we have. And in, in light of the, in the advent of the COVID-19, what has occurred, one of the things that occurred is the Secretary of State, I think in an attempt to, to mitigate some of the, the problems with COVID, had mailed out millions of applications, absentee ballot applications to people who were not already on the permanent AV list. If you remember, in two years ago, we passed a law that was an amendment to the constitution. It was 18-3 was the proposal. And what it did was said that you can register to vote up until eight o'clock the day of, of the election. You could be placed on the permanent AV list. You can ask for a permanent AV ballot for no reason. So there were several things that changed in our election laws. And so one of the things they, the state did here, the Secretary of State did, was mailed out millions of these absentee ballot request forms all across the state. And just to give you an idea of how many they sent out, in the township of Plymouth, we have 23,000, give or take a few voters. We had about 6,000 on the permanent AV list. So the Secretary of State mailed out another 16,000, 17,000 of these applications to the people in the township. Now, what occurred is it exposed some problems with our qualified voter files, our voter rolls, where we have record of everybody who's a registered voter. What this exposed, and I know that some of you have experienced this personally and maybe some of you in the audience and those of you at home have experienced this where, gee, all of a sudden I've, I've got an absentee ballot request form for someone who doesn't live here. I've lived in my house for five years or 10 years and all of a sudden I'm getting these applications from the state for people to get an absentee ballot and they don't live here. I don't even know who they are. Now, some of those people may in fact be legitimate because military people maintain their original voter residence. So if you just bought your home five years ago, but it's a military person you bought it from, they may be in Germany or Japan, but they maintain your address as their original and permanent registration address. So it could be someone like that. But more than that, it's someone who has moved, maybe someone has died. And of course, there are state and federal laws that govern how you manage the qualified voter files and voter rolls. Some of those say that we can't take anybody off the voter rolls for two complete presidential cycles. And the reason for that is they don't want to disenfranchise somebody. Maybe someone didn't vote in the, in the last presidential election and maybe they'll vote in the next one or maybe they've missed two. So you can't remove, just automatically remove people just simply because they didn't vote. However, you do have people who have moved. You have apartment buildings where maybe you have people who are a little bit more transient. So you have all of these ballots being mailed out, applications being mailed out to these people where there, there isn't any. Now, to give you an idea of how many, I think that, how often that occurred in the township, just last year, this board okayed the moving of two polling places, precinct three and precinct nine. We just moved the polling places. We didn't change the precincts. We then are required to have a vote of the board, which we did. And then we mailed out new cards to people saying, here's where your new place to vote is. Well, in each instance, there was about a 10% return where the people were no longer there. They were on the voter rolls, but they really weren't there. Maybe they moved to another state, maybe they moved to the location, they didn't register somewhere else, maybe someone has died, but they haven't been taken off the rolls yet. So that was 10%. So if that is true in those two precincts, I would then extrapolate what happened in all 12 precincts where you have about, you have about 2,000 people in each one and we have 23,000 people. So I estimate that the Secretary of State mailed out about 2,000 absentee ballot request forms to people who are no longer here. And you say, well, okay. Well, the real problem is, is something that I'm concerned about, I know the board members are and I know the public is, is what if someone takes one of those absentee ballot request forms that's not theirs and they sign the person's name on it and send it in? Is it possible that they could get a ballot? Well, yes, that is possible. One of the things that we do, and all clerks are supposed to do this, and I really pride myself on this, my staff does a very good job, is when you send an absentee ballot request form, we check your signature. We look at your signature and we make sure it matches what we have on file electronically and in the hard copies that we have. And we've probably had 300 instances where we've had to ask someone to come back in, prove that they are that person and their, their signature has changed, maybe for a medical reason, you know? Could imagine someone who's come down with Parkinson's, no longer can sign their name the right, the way it used to. So we require that. In doing that, what I, I discovered was someone had sent a application in and we checked the signature and we find out that it wasn't that person. So someone at an address in Plymouth Township submitted an application that wasn't that person. Now I was able to find old records and got a phone number for that person, call, and sure enough, they live in another state. And they no longer live here. Matter of fact, they not only live in another state, they're registered, vote in another state, and they have voted in another state subsequent to being on our voter rolls. To complicate it even more, this person was registered twice in our jurisdiction. Once as their maiden name and a second time as their married name. So this person had two absentee ballot request forms mailed to them, one in their married name and one in their maiden name. And someone sent the maiden name one in. So when I determined that this person said it wasn't them, so then I contacted, then in, in doing so, we did the research and found out that the person was registered twice. So here's an example, a real hard, concrete empirical data that something bad could happen. So when someone votes in someone else's name, it infringes on all of our rights to vote. Additionally, so we called the Secretary of State and got their investigators in to investigate this, this issue. Additionally, we had a gentleman come in who says, I've got this application, I'm not a, I'm not a citizen. But he had been registered by the Secretary of State when he went and got a license. And they were, they automatically did it by accident, I would suppose. But this person surrendered it and said, I, you know, please take me off of this. I don't want to get in trouble with the INS. Prior to this, last year, we had people come in, two non-citizens come in with letters from INS saying, you know, we're going to do bad things to you because you're registered to vote. They were going to try to become citizens and they have this, how come you're, you're registered to vote? Are you attempting to vote and you're not a citizen? One of the persons, you could tell again, had been, had been okayed by the Secretary of State again. The fourth person, no longer lived here, but had been registered here, was not a citizen, had moved to another jurisdiction and in fact voted in that jurisdiction and they were not a citizen and had no right to vote. So here we have some real empirical evidence that there's a problem with our voter rolls. They need to be updated. Now, the rules about how you can get someone off the voter rolls, they die, they move, they register someplace else, they have to miss several major elections before the state does it. We don't take people off. The state does. Now that we have, they were, they were low to do that or hesitant to do that because under the old scheme, as you recall, prior to 18, the new law being passed, 30 days prior to an election, you couldn't register. So you would, you couldn't vote in that election unless you registered 30 days before. Now you can register right up to eight o'clock on election day. So before, if they had taken you erroneously off the voter's list, you couldn't register to vote and you had missed the opportunity to vote. Now that you can register to vote right up to the date, if the, if the Secretary of State was to go in and clean the voter rolls, you would not be depriving anybody of their fundamental right to vote. You might inconvenience them because they could come in, register to vote right up till the deadline, right up until eight o'clock. So there would be no hazard in us asking the Secretary of State to obey all the federal laws, all the state laws. And with this empirical data, the things that we're really afraid of actually going on, we have empirical evidence that the things that we're afraid of can go on, has gone on, is going on. And we're, put together a resolution here that I hope the board supports and that the public will think is a good idea, to where we ask the Secretary of State to do their job under the federal law, under state laws, and enact a new policy to where they will clean the voter rolls prior to the next upcoming election, which is the presidential election, which is very, very important to all of us. All elections are. But here we have real empirical data that there's issues with the system as it's worked. And now is an opportunity to do that because if you were to go in and clean these rolls off, you're not going to be infringing on anyone's fundamental right to vote. They can come in and register right then and there and, and, and cast the ballot. So, so what I'm asking the board to do is to approve this resolution and send this off to the Secretary of State. I hope other clerks in other jurisdictions join in this kind of effort. I hope that you, the public, call the Secretary of State, call your representatives and ask them to do something about this because anytime that someone is voting when they shouldn't be voting infringes on all of us. And so that's what I would like for this board to do and I'm willing to accept any questions from the board and from the public.
Any questions for Jerry? Any questions from the public for Jerry? Yeah. Mary Ann?
You guys have a question about the township with respect? Because it almost makes it sound like it's widespread. That there's a lot of, a lot of-
Well, it's probably a small percentage, but the opportunity is there. You have 2,000 opportunities. And if you take that number that I just used and you apply it over the state, you're talking about a half a million absentee ballot request forms going to people in home- going to people in homes, in apartments, that no longer live there. Oh, I didn't know, I'm not saying that, and I thought I was being very clear. I'm being very clear. If one person in this township votes when they're not supposed to, impacts all of your votes. You know, so I mean, how many times have you seen elections be won by one vote? Be won by a handful of votes? And so it wouldn't take very much to have an outcome that is undesirable for all of us. And I think the remedy is really easy. The state can go through the voter rolls, and even if they were to survey all of the clerks out there, and they say, listen, we've got 2,000 people that need to be taken off those rolls, they could take them off, and if there's even an error in removing someone who is registered, that person is not harmed fundamentally. They may be inconvenienced, but they can come into the clerk's office and say, it's Election Day, I want to register, and I can vote. So the fear of the old system of doing this has been eliminated by the new law. And so I think that the Secretary of State should take this opportunity to enact new policies and procedures, so that we can clean up the voter rolls, so you don't even waste a million dollars sending out 500,000 ballot request forms to people that no longer exist there.
But didn't that person who attempted to vote twice commit a crime in doing so?
We turned it over to investigation. I'm not here to go to the intent of anybody who sent that in. I mean, we don't know who it was that sent it in. They're investigating it. But clearly, the person who had that name and was a voter here is no longer here and said they didn't do it. They're voting, they're living in another state and voting in another state. And so we turned this information over to the Secretary of State for investigation.
I just want to add one thing. I was surprised, because I thought that this database, this QRF or whatever it's called, was so fundamentally accurate that this kind of thing didn't happen. So when at my house, a letter arrived for someone who lived with us longer than seven years ago, and who now lives in another state and votes in that state, I was shocked. I asked if I could open this, because I thought it was potentially this letter from the Secretary of State on this, for this purpose. She said yes. But that's where I had to stop, because now she's concerned about the impacts on her. But the fundamental question is, how is this possible? When she's registered in another state, she's got a driver's license in another state, she works in another state, and it's really shocking, and calls into some question the integrity of these databases, or this database.
And it's only because, I think, of the good works of the people in the industry, like I was doing, like my staff is doing, we're checking the signatures. Now, I can't speak for every jurisdiction, but that's what we do. And like I said, we had probably, you know, several hundred instances where we contacted the people and say, please come in with your identification, and show us your new signature and your ID, so that we can then take that new signature and put it in the system, so that in the future, someone else can look at it and see that it's correct. I mean, sometimes, you know, some people have medical issues. I've gone to their houses and had new signature cards done, and so that we could put them into the system, to make the system accurate. And now you have the Secretary of State allowing you to send in these applications without signatures electronically. And I just think that's foolish. How are you going to check for fraud? Now, at the end, I could check the ballot, but now I've missed an opportunity to check it beforehand.
Jerry, you're saying that the application can be sent in with an electronic signature?
Yes, it's a new electronic one.
You're doing that right now? It's improper?
They've sent them in, yes. And we have to okay them, but our only check then is to... Our only check then is when the ballot comes in, I can examine the ballot.
Yeah, but that's in the heat of the battle of massive counting of thousands of ballots.
True.
It's very difficult to do that kind of handwriting analysis.
I just want to disapprove this resolution, get it off to the Secretary of State, and as a way to say, look, here, Secretary of State, here's empirical data that there's issues, and we would like for you to address it.
Other municipalities are doing this. Other municipalities are doing this exact same thing.
Let's do a motion.
Yeah, you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'll do it. I move that the Charter Township of Plymouth, Board of Trustees, requests the Secretary of State, one, to comply with the duties under both the Michigan Election Law and the NVRA, to remove from the Qualified Voter Files all previous in...
All persons. ... ineligible to vote, and, two, take other such measures as necessary to eliminate all voter fraud in the election in November of 2020.
Motion's been made by Trustee Kirmy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kirmy?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Very good. Item E, Public Comments, limited to...
Can we go off this? I have a question for Jerry. I know at least five people who, names were on the July 2 absentee ballot mass mailing, who still haven't received them. Is there something going on? I realize that there can be anomalies with the mail, but that's two weeks ago.
That's true. Many of you recall, just at our last meeting, the Treasurer mentioned that he sent out his tax bills, and a lot of them have still not arrived. And so there's some issues with the mail processing going on. We've been in contact with the Postal Service. We've asked the state to contact the Postal Service also. And what I would ask is that anyone who has asked for a ballot prior to July 1 and have not received it, to call this office, to email me, and then we will trace it to make sure that you get a ballot. Because ultimately, if you don't receive one pretty soon, then we will spoil that ballot and reissue another one. And it might be in your best interest to come in and do it in person. And if there's some medical reason you can't, we'll spoil the ballot, and I will deliver it to you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to Item E, Public Comment, limited to three minutes. Anyone want to come forward?
John Stewart, 36-year resident of Lake Point, same address on Maplewood. And I apologize, Trustee Heitman, I'm violating the nine o'clock rule, but it is Gerald Ford's birthday, one of my all-time heroes. But I, a couple of things to update. At least a dozen residences of Lake Point have taken the initiative to hire their own cement contracting companies to pave. The cement went down today, and pictures have been posted all over Facebook during this meeting. ADA compliant. So if any of you would like to join me on roller blades, we hope to do that. Last Friday, I get really excited about this, because my brother-in-law's an investor in Tesla. 2.5 billion raised by Rivian, electric vehicle platforms to be produced within months. Wabasto, 572 jobs must be filled in the next seven months. I directly spoke with the HR person there, and she and I have been in direct contact. Across Michigan, Plymouth Township is envied for economic development. Last night, Supervisor Bob Nix specifically told me that he is very grateful. He's sounding like a 70-year-old lawyer, which I am also, and he is. He's very grateful for Supervisor Kurt Heisey, because of his knowledge and expertise in MITC, his collegial and collaborative efforts with Northville Township. And I'm just looking forward to, you know, the job. A job is the linchpin of our economy. Let's go onward and forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on now to Board Comments. We are going to meet again on Tuesday, July 28. We will not meet on August 4, because there's going to be something else going on that day. And then we will also not meet on August 11, because that's the week after the primary. This building is still going to be a mess. This room will be a mess. We're not going to have any ability to meet. So we will meet only once in the month of August, which would be the 25th. We have a fairly busy schedule that night, as you may imagine. When we meet next Tuesday, we will have the Watawa budget for this year, and a couple other items, but we'll try to, we're going to try to keep it, try to keep it light. Anyone have any questions for me? Okay. Jerry? I think you've taken up all your time tonight.
I know, just to reiterate, we've sent out over 8,000 absentee ballot request forms. We've got about 12% in right now, so people are still deciding to vote. But just again, if you sent in an application, you haven't got your ballot yet, especially if you sent it in before July 1, give us a call, and we'll track it down for you.
How are you doing on election workers?
Well, today we had an Election Commission meeting, and we set the staffing. We're down from what I would like, but we have enough people to do the job. A number of people who were historically doing this were kind of concerned about COVID, and that's understandable. But we did get some new people in, and we're having training sessions for those people.
And you've been working with the fire chief on COVID compliance at all the polling locations?
Absolutely. Just for everyone to know, we're going to have face masks, face shields, gloves, cleaning material. We're going to have hand sanitizer dispensers at all the polling places. We're going to make it as safe as we possibly can.
Jerry, you're still taking people that will apply to help you in the election? Or you're done, cut off and hiring?
No, I can still train some, what I call alternates, because if more, I might have more people who drop out, you know? So I'll have an additional training session in another week.
So next week is a training session?
Yes.
So anyone who's interested needs to get in on that window?
Need to get in on it, right. All right.
Okay, Bob?
Two things. One, I had some members of the community approach me about the idea of taking a part of that passive park and turning it into a, and making a provision for a community garden, which I think is a terrific idea. I've seen it done in other communities. So in that scenario, people would have the ability to come in, you know, those that may not have the ability to create a garden in their own home. We don't need to make a decision on right now. I just kind of wanted to float that out there and open that for your consideration.
Sure. Yeah, or maybe if not there, maybe at another location. We've got other free space.
So maybe we can talk about that at some point in the future.
Yeah.
Second question I had, and I thought it was appropriate to ask it here, because I've heard this a few times, and I had a resident call me the other day to ask about, he said that it's really dirty if you, on Beck Road, north of 14, meaning that he works in one of the businesses there, and he says the cars are constantly covered in dirt, and wondered if that's because of the trucks going to the landfill, kicking up all that dirt, and whether the county makes any provision to like sweep that road or clean that road in any way. Have you heard that before too, Gary?
Yeah.
Beck Road in particular, or some of the side streets?
Beck Road in particular.
Yeah, I mean, Beck Road is in bad shape there. The truck traffic is never-ending, it's 24/7. A lot of those trucks that are going to the Salem landfill are filled with industrial debris and just about everything else. The dust is an issue there. The county, to my knowledge, does have street sweepers, but they're few and far between. Yeah, I've seen them, usually in Heinz Park or someplace like that. We have street sweepers as well. We typically don't go onto the main county roads like that. And I'm not sure if we would even be equipped to handle some of the loaves of debris that you would have there, rocks and whatnot, you know?
So I'll reach out to our county commissioner.
Yeah, try, and, you know, email her and CC me and Sue on that, because we'd like to follow up as well.
Is he implying that it's dust? Or is it?
Yeah.
Well, isn't there some construction going on with what we just discussed here? Hillside is doing excavation for roads and sewer at some of these places, right?
No.
Well, this gentleman works at AVL, right?
Yeah, it's Beck and M14.
Yeah, but the wind grabs it and takes it. Could be from the landfill, who knows?
Well, it's debris going to the landfill, yeah.
Yeah. That's a long way for dirt.
Yeah, it's coming off the trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming off the trucks.
Okay, Jerry?
The only thing I got is, again, the census, very important. We're only like a tenth of a percent behind Grosse Pointe right now for best in the area. You know me, I hate to be second to anything, so let's go. Come on, if you haven't filled out your census, go do it.
All right. Chuck Dempsey? Pass. Chuck?
Question on sidewalks. What method did we use to notify and when that we had canceled the program for 2020?
We sent a letter out about 10 days after we made the decision, and it went out to everybody in Lake Point who had, or it's not just Lake Point, everybody in that zone who had been tagged for a sidewalk.
All right. Also, you X them, you put the X's on anyway, right?
We, we should, I don't know where we are along that. I've personally seen the X's when I've been walking around there lately.
Yeah, the X's are complete. We've marked out all the sidewalks that were included in this year's program.
Thanks for doing that.
Okay. Mark Clinton?
All set.
All right, we are done. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn at 9:28 PM.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second? Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor of a German signify by saying aye.
Aye.